Hello everyone and welcome to the final Decaturish.com election forum. I am your host, editor and publisher, Dan Wizenhunt. Our final forum is going to feature candidates for Decatur City Commission District One. Sorry, I'm just so excited to be at the end of the forums that I'm tripping over myself. But we're at Decatur City Commission District One. The election is going to be November 2nd. Early voting is going to be October 12th. And let's meet our candidates. Commissioner Kelly Walsh is running for reelection. Commissioner, how are you today?
Good morning. Thank you. Glad to be here.
Thank you. And her challenger is Katie Bell. Katie, how are you this morning?
Good morning. Doing well. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. And so each candidate is going to have three minutes to make an opening statement. Then we're going to go down our list of questions. They'll have three minutes to answer each question. We're going to rotate who leads off each question. When a candidate gets too close to three minutes, I'm keeping time over here. I'm going to lift a finger and so that means they have 10 seconds left to wrap up whatever they're doing. So we can move on to the next question. If you have a question, if you want to ask something of these candidates, create yourself a Twitch account. Give us a follow and put your question in the comments and we will be glad to ask them. All of our elections coverage for Decatur, Avondale Estates and Atlanta are going to be found at Decaturishvotes.com. Again, that is Decaturishvotes.com. You'll find our Q and A's. You're going to find coverage of these forums, videos of these forums and all the information you need about voter registration and when and where to cast your ballot in the upcoming election. So visit Decaturishvotes.com for that. If you appreciate Decaturish, if you appreciate these forums and all the things that we've been doing to keep you informed about the November 2nd election, there is a link right there. You could see it. It's called SupportMyLocalNews.com. We have about 1,500 people who give us a little bit of money every month. And that's what helps us cover your city government. That's what helps us pay reporters to go to these meetings. It's what helps us design a website, find a server to host that website, keep the lights on. The cost of producing free news is not free. It's considerable. And so we do depend on community support to continue providing this information to you. So if that matters to you, if having local news matters to you, please visit SupportMyLocalNews.com and become a paying supporter today. So with that out of the way, we're going to get started with our opening statements. Commissioner Walsh, we're going to start with you. You're going to have three minutes to make your opening statement.
Great. Thank you. Good morning. It's great to be here. I'm really grateful for the opportunity. Thank you to Dan and Decaturish for creating this forum and this opportunity to exchange ideas and views on Decatur. I'll introduce myself, Kelly Walsh, District One City Commissioner. I've lived in Decatur for 16 years, since 2005 adds up. My husband Pat and I have two kids. They're teenagers. And in my day job, I'm a residential Realtor and I work with the Keller Williams office in downtown Decatur. I was elected in 2017 and joined the commission in early 18. And I've come up through what I'll call a progression of leadership. I really think that Decatur is an opportunity zone for leadership. And I've had the chance to do a lot of things in service and in, in community. From running the PTA at my kid's school, I served on the active living board and shared that. I've also been heavily involved in some nonprofit boards, call it off campus. Some great nonprofits that contribute to health and wellness, children and fitness, like the Atlanta Track Club and Girls on the Run. And those are some of the things that keep me busy outside of work and commissioning. And recently I joined the, the local advisory board of the YMCA, which is going to be really exciting. I find this to be a unique intersection of urban and suburban. And it's a really special town. It's a big town and a small city at the same time. And I think our citizens are special in that they're informed, they're engaged, opinionated, which is a good thing. And I think our community is also really driven and charitable. So having said that, I think we live in a community that is okay to be what I call constructively dissatisfied. And so we don't rest on our laurels and we want to do better and be better. And I think in general, we work really well to, to move forward in a lot of challenging ways. And it's in that culture that I want to work to accelerate us out of the pandemic and into the next 10 years of planning using our, our vehicle of the strategic plan. And that vehicle gives us a great platform for working on the hardest things that are challenges to our city around climate, housing, mobility, race and social justice. And all of that underpinned by doing a better job of civic engagement and building trust. This is a nonpartisan role. The stuff we work on is what really makes Decatur healthy and safe and thriving. And we don't make decisions, any one of us singularly. It's really a team sport and a relay race. So you have to be a coalition builder. You have to communicate, rely on your teammates and your staff and your community to get the job done together. So that really suits my personality. It's why I like it so much. So I'd like to keep serving for another four years. So that's just a little bit about me. I really look forward to the conversation and thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Katie Bell, three minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you to Decaturish and to Dan for moderating this forum. I'd also like to extend a special thank you to Commissioner Kelly Walsh for agreeing to postpone the forum as I had a breakthrough case of COVID-19. I'm very grateful that I only had mild symptoms and I can really think that I can thank the science for that. And I would take this as an opportunity to encourage everyone to get vaccinated. I would also like to thank the voters for taking the time out of your busy Saturdays and thank you for your time and attention. My name is Katie Bell. I'm a school counselor. I'm an adjunct professor, former educator at the Drew Charter School. And I'm also a therapist in private practice. I live out of Scott in Thermont. We lived here for three years. Five years previous to that, we lived in North Decatur. And we waited with bated breath to have the opportunity to live and afford to live in Decatur. So we're very grateful to be in the city of Decatur proper. I live with my partner Benjamin. He is a social worker at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, as well as a collaborator with Family Ties. And we live with our two dogs. They're our fur babies, I should say. One is Spooky and one is Mr. Beef. He's quite popular. He has a sandwich named after him at the Brick Store Pub. I want to discuss my why as well. I think that the guiding lens that I have is making sure that things in Decatur are inclusive, equitable, and also diverse. Inclusive, meaning that we are listening to everyone's voices. I find that often people who don't have a seat at the table have a answer to the hard questions and challenges that we face, and I want to represent those individuals. I've spent my career, my narrative is, is that I've listened closely, being an advocate for populations through all walks of life, clients, adults, older adults, as well as different diverse cultures, populations and unique perspectives. So I really value bringing that in those positions to the table. I want to bring the passion that I have for advocating for all voices to the table and making sure that I'm bringing that to City Hall and really looking at stories that are similar to mine. I am representative of our workforce, a young professional, one who doesn't have children yet, someone who makes below the average median income. And I want to make sure that all voices are represented at the table. And I know that my story is very much similar to lots of us who live in the community of Decatur or who would like to live in the community of Decatur. So I really want to make sure that my guiding lens is looking at things through inclusivity and that things are equitable, looking at affordable housing, making sure that our voices of all walks of life are represented, whether you live in an affordable development or in a senior establishment or an establishment for older adults, those of which who may not be able to live here without our tax referendum. I want to make sure that we all have an equitable opportunity to live, work and play in Decatur, which is our mantra. So I want to make sure I'm keeping a close eye on sustainability, whether that's economic, environmental or social, making sure that we're valuing our communities of color, making sure that we're valuing our students and making sure that we have communication between our board and our school board.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie. So our first question is going to come from a viewer, which is great. We love viewer questions. The viewer asks, recently, the community went through a debate regarding the uses of Legacy Park. The master plan calls for a fair bit of affordable housing and some people felt more green space would be a better use. Where do the candidates stand regarding the current plan's balance between green space and affordable housing? And would you advocate for more green space or more affordable housing at Legacy Park? And we're going to start with Katie Bell. You have three minutes.
That's a great question. So thinking about what we're going to do with Legacy Park and balancing our green space as well as looking at our affordable housing, I think is a really important question to ask ourselves. I know that there are lots of plans that are in place for the cottages, the 108 Park Place, and also affordable housing plans that are available for our legacy structures that are already sitting on the property. I think it's an important way that we can also utilize the structures that are already existing there is to think of innovative ways that we can create affordable housing that is already with structures that are existing there. And I understand also the importance of creating green spaces as well. I know that when we look at things like climate change and we look at an aerial view of the city of Decatur, we realize that our tree canopy is diminishing and our heat desert because of our parking lots are also creating climate change. So I think it's really important to make sure that we're utilizing green spaces. And those can be opportunities for individuals who may not have the opportunity to be in an organized sport or have children, to have the opportunity to go down the street and be able to run around if they don't have the opportunity to be in some kind of organized program or something after school. As well as affordable housing, I think it's really going to take a close eye on inclusion and also making sure that we're equitable in the city to make sure that we're providing workforce housing, housing for our seniors and older adults, and also affordable housing for other individuals that are part of the workforce. I represent a part of that workforce and I also live in an affordable development. So I know the importance of creating spaces for our teachers, for our nurses, our firefighters, and making sure that that's available. So I really want to make sure that we're facilitating the missing middle housing and affordable housing, providing and protecting our already existing affordable housing units, as well as looking at green space, making sure that we're protecting our canopy. And a part of that means that we may have to look at making sure our ordinance is, is at 70% canopy rather than what it is now. So I think how we utilize the green space is important and also protecting it as well as balancing affordable housing.
Thank you. Commissioner Walsh, same question to you. Recently, the city went through a debate regarding the uses of Legacy Park. The current plan calls for affordable housing and some people felt that more green space would be a better use. Where do you stand regarding the current plan's balance between green space and affordable housing? Would you advocate for more green space or more affordable housing at Legacy Park? Three minutes.
Thank you. So first of all, the purchase of Legacy Park in 2017 is probably one of the most important opportunities of a generation for our city. So 77 acres is a big deal. We went straight into a master planning process that took a full year and engaged well over a thousand people over that time. I think we really worked hard to find all the voices around the table. And in fact, sometimes we had voices luckily from outside Decatur who also want to work here and they transit here or want to come here for pleasure. So it was a robust planning process. Ultimately, I think we came out with a very balanced plan. The United Methodist Children's Home always has had housing. Families have lived there. So the idea that it would retain a housing attribute in some of the campus, I think makes a lot of sense. So it allows us to also take our time to see how the property lives and gives back to us and what we need from it. But we have a social contract now with our community as of the master plan that we've adopted. Within that, we had another, almost a year-long planning on the affordable housing addendum. So we very much consecrated that we have green space, 22 acres in preservation. We have orchards. We have a place for an amphitheater. There's absolutely opportunities for passive and active people out there. I ran the 5K at the, on the cross-country course just this morning. So it's absolutely a place that can be activated. We will have an artist village. I think there is a great balance. Last year, there was a fair amount of dialogue about whether or not more affordable workforce-specific housing belonged there. I went to the mat for that on meeting after meeting. I'm sure my opponent was tuned in as well. And I said, let's make room on the bench. We need this housing. Owning the land in the terms of affordable housing and building new, which on the south side this would be, you have to own the land. That's the only Kickstarter that you can, that you can have. On the north side, I'm thrilled that we might be able to do inclusive housing and adaptively reuse buildings that are already there, which is just really a smart, resilient, environmentally friendly way to use those buildings. So I know there's debate. I think it's even 77 acres is finite, right? We start to run out of things. We want to do everything there. We have plans for a competitive track and field and a multi-purpose field. We need those facilities particularly that we would share with our schools. We want to talk about what our schools need as well. They need athletic facilities. And the, the city is, is well positioned to share in those. And through that, that's how we build community. I believe we build equitable outcomes by getting more kids out, healthy in our green spaces and on our fields. So again, yeah, housing on the south side was something we talked a lot about last year. I don't think we opened that back up. We'll continue to shore up the buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
This means wrap up.
Yeah. One, one, the finger for, for people who don't know, the index finger means 10 seconds out. So it's time to pull that into the driveway when we're, when we're doing that. So a great question. We've, we've got a really good crowd today. Want to remind viewers, if they want to ask questions of these candidates, this is your opportunity. Create yourself a Twitch account, give us a follow and drop your questions in the comments. And we'll ask them of the candidates if they, if they look like good questions. So with that said, the next question, we're going to start with Commissioner Walsh. Commissioner Walsh, what is your opinion of the city's face mask ordinance? And would you be open, open to extending that ordinance as needed? Three minutes.
We don't talk about the mask ordinance enough as, as a success story, as something that really demonstrates our community and our culture of caring and are willing to make sacrifices for each other. We did not have the battle that communities, the divisive battle that communities in our country had and still are having. So it feels like kind of the fog of war when we made that last July in 2020. It felt risky. In fact, I mean, we had the threat of being sued by our own governor. And just a couple of cities had walked that plank at that time. So now we understand it to be, it's what we do and we can dial that in as needed. If we feel that the numbers are appropriate to step back, we did it once briefly. We continue to follow the science CDC guidance. And let me tell you, some people don't know this, we actually had a pandemic plan ready to open as we went into March, February, March of 2020. It wasn't exactly, didn't know about COVID-19 yet, but it was a very specific plan that allowed us to mount an emergency response team led by city manager, senior staff. It's cross-functional and we get guidance every 30 days when we're prepared to discuss the mask ordinance, which we will again on Monday. We learn as we go and we recalibrate, but I will absolutely stand by the mask ordinance as a, as a way to protect our community. And I believe we have the support of the community. It's, it's good for our schools. It's good for all of us if we stay safe together. So it is, I think it also has flexibility. It ended up being rather elegant once we understood more about this being mostly aerosolized and not very transmissible outdoors. So it does allow us to do what Decatur does, which is be outdoors, stay healthy, exercise, and not wear the mask necessarily outside if you can socially distance. So I think it's been one, a linchpin of our reaction to the pandemic for the last year and a half.
Thank you. Katie Bell, same question to you. What's your opinion of the city's face mask ordinance? And would you be opening, open to extending that ordinance as needed? Three minutes.
Thank you. So when thinking about how we responded as a city to COVID-19 and the pandemic and the steps that we took as a city to help reduce the spread of the virus, I was extremely grateful for how responsive the city was. Recently, getting over COVID-19, I know that even as a breakthrough case in being vaccinated, the importance of wearing a mask and staying socially distanced. So I support the mask ordinance and also making sure that we extend that if possible. And I'm also supportive of getting vaccinated. Like I said before, I think it's important to be prudent and continue to support businesses also as they try to keep their staff safe as well as our education system in schools and making sure that they are establishing best practices based upon the culture of their school, their classroom and their business. Also making sure that I also support limiting the number of individuals who are in an enclosed space. I think Decatur does a great job in introducing activities as well as events that are outside and I support those as well. And I also support the autonomy of establishing socially-distanced protocols for each individual business as well. And also funding the protective personal equipment such as masks and gloves for individuals, sanitation and cleaning supplies for our teachers, our firefighters, nurses and our waste removal workers. It's really important that I think that we get a handle on this pandemic and it's through strengthening communication first and foremost. I think it is important to receive testimonials from workers, employers, teachers, residents in order to get a more robust understanding of how this virus is impacting our city so that we can get knowledge of real-life circumstances and stories and experiences to inform our practice. So ultimately, I think Decatur has gotten a lot of funds from the CARES Act and has acted quickly to disperse these funds. And so yes, I do support the continued mask ordinance as well.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with Katie. What would you like to see the city use its American Rescue Plan funding for within the guidelines set by the federal government? Three minutes.
So when I think about funding in general and, and knowing about the rescue funding, I think it's important to use funding from a perspective of holistic approach. Specifically funding that when we think about looking at making our local businesses more robust, looking at our school systems and how we're responding to our curriculum and our education pieces. I think funding, it's more of a fundamental question of funding overall. And what we do with that funding is important. I have really liked how we have used the CARES funds to disperse it adequately and appropriately. And so I'd like to see the rescue fund be used for something that we have a close eye on as well. So thinking about everything from an equitable and inclusive perspective, I think it's really important that we look at things from all perspectives and look how it's impacting, how maybe how things are impacting our businesses as well as our residents, as well as our teachers. And it's important to even look at our city hall, maybe looking at how our budget is specifically, we have top five, top things that we are funded, that basically are funded, which we have our DeKalb County. We have our City of Decatur schools. We have Emory and Agnes Scott, as well as our City of Decatur. So it's really important that everyone is on the same page. Whatever is done with those funds and how to disperse those is important that we are looking at it from a holistic approach and that all voices are represented at the table.
Thank you. Commissioner Walsh, same question to you. What would you like the city, the city use its American Rescue Plan funding for within the guidelines set by the federal government? Three minutes.
Well, it's a strange silver lining of a pandemic to be the recipient of $9.6 million from the ARPA funds, half of which has already been deposited in the bank. So not all cities are poised to actually absorb that funding, do it efficiently, do it equitably, but we are. So that's as a result of being a city that plans, being a So that's as a result of being a city that plans, being a thoughtful city that that has taken this into consideration for some time now. We were able to watch this coming down, down the road. So it's heavily geared toward infrastructure and we always want to put a lot of money, I do, but I believe we're aligned on really using that to accelerate our recently adopted Stormwater Master Plan. We can tackle a couple of the top-tier pain points from the Stormwater Plan if we can use some of the ARPA funds for that. We will absolutely use it to put into some resiliency efforts around solar. We continue to add solar to city buildings. Speaking back again about Legacy Park, we can take those funds and actually that could be the catalyst for the affordable housing project on either the north or south side. We talked about this in a, in a work session. There's some things that they sound like smaller investments, but they add up. They include things around placemaking. We can add shade to the square, which could be really great for how we continue to activate the, the Marta Plaza there. But one of the most important assets we have is our human capital at City Hall. If ARPA funds can help us to better support and give bonuses and incentives to recruit and retain great, great employees, I think we should absolutely prioritize that. We're in a tsunami of, of job churn and turnover in our country. And I think all municipalities have to have an eye to attracting and retaining the best talent, keeping them safe, giving them good healthcare and supporting them in that way. Luckily for us, we don't need these funds truly yet at this point for lost revenues per se, but it's important to know that we can budget wisely and use them as needed for that. So, oh, whack to Legacy Park. The funds more recently, late summer, were updated to include parks and recreation. We could acquire other green space if we identify it in the city, but we could also use it potentially to build the athletic facility planned for Legacy Park, which would be a competition track and a regulation multipurpose field, again, which would serve our entire community from little kids to seniors who can use those facilities.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with Commissioner Walsh. And the question is, how will you work to address stormwater issues within the city? Three minutes.
Fortunately, we do have a very recently updated Stormwater Master Plan. It's a couple hundred pages in length. You can find it at decaternext.com. It divides our projects into three tiers. So it's it's a thirty-year plan that I, I believe has a budget tag, tagged to it of about seventy million dollars. So and now an ordinance that supports that with updated fees. Unfortunately, we've seen in the county, they haven't updated their plan yet and you might see a very low stormwater fee. But we've taken two years, it took, the pandemic included, to get the Stormwater Master Plan finalized. So it also takes being responsive to residents. I was just on Willow Lane a couple months ago. The early May storm was so traumatic for them. So I went there, I met with them, with Ted Terry from the county and we talked in person to residents and now we have an email list. We have activated staff to really keep kind of a high-touch relationship on this problem there. That's a longstanding problem on Willow, but we know we need to partner with the county. Stormwater does not respect municipal boundaries. Pandemics don't, stormwater doesn't. So if you're not working with your partners, you're not going to get, get everything done that you want to get done. But yeah, I think we work our plan. We use ARPA funds really smartly and prudently and aggressively. And that's my, that's my answer for you.
Thank you. Katie, same question to you. How will you work to address stormwater issues in the city? Three minutes.
When looking at stormwater, I think it's really important and prudent to make sure that we're slowing it down, we're spreading it out and we're soaking it in. So when I think about stormwater and how we address that, I really think about our tree ordinance and I really think about innovative ways to make sure that we're creating green space. So we need to protect our trees, our green space and our native plants in order to, and add plants as well, in order to reduce the impact of deforestation, especially that we see due to development in our city and make sure that we're increasing our awareness of that as well. I think when we think about being knowledgeable of what that means, it's because we have lack of trees. It's because we have, we have deforestation happening. So it's really important to be educated on why it's important to make sure that we are protecting things like our trees, like our green space and like our native plants. If you look, again, like I said earlier, an aerial map of the city, it's really important and it illustrates there's clearly a lack of trees and this includes making or noticing that we have deserts because of our parking lot. So making sure that we are thinking of innovative ways. I met with Commissioner Ted Terry as well and we talked about different ways that we can add greenery at top of our buildings. Also thinking about different ways that we can protect, protect our native species as, as already. And also thinking about that impact of stormwater. It's, it's an impact of climate change. So I'm very much a part of supporting Save Decatur Trees and also Decatur cares about climate change. And I really do think and commit that by the year 2030 that we can be a hundred percent clean energy indicator. Also making sure that we are thinking of innovative ways like creating less waste so that we're making sure that we're leaving a small thumbprint. So thinking about ways that we could have businesses be a hundred percent compostable waste. I think if the bens can do it, then we can do it in Decatur. Also thinking about different ways to make sure that we have a stronger tree ordinance and protecting that tree ordinance. I really think that we need to push for seventy percent canopy. So when thinking about stormwater, I think protecting our trees, our native species, making sure that we have a close eye on how climate change is impacting our city is one way that we can mitigate that.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Katie Bell. Katie, do you think the city should implement development impact fees? Three minutes. You're, you're on mute, Katie. Sorry.
When speaking about development impact fees, speak a little bit more to that.
Impact fees charged to developers to offset the costs of impacts that developments have on cities.
Right. When thinking about the ways that fees are kind of implemented on developers, I think something that's really important to do is making sure that before we think about fees or raising taxes or having certain things, that we really look at other innovative and creative ways to protect our developments that we already have that could specifically include affordable housing development or workforce developments. I think again, like I said earlier, it's really important that we understand the impact of what we already have in the city because we are running out of space. And I know that we have, have to have a balance of development versus also making sure that that development is bringing us business to our small businesses and supporting those. And at the same time, I think it's really important that before we look at fees or we look at raising taxes, that we're really looking at how we can protect already existing structures. So promoting that educational engagement, making sure that we're protecting our existing affordable units by allowing and maybe even looking at removing exclusionary zoning and implementing more inclusionary zoning, ways for, you know, us to think about building things like that missile, missing middle housing, like backyard cottages or duplexes and really looking at townhomes. Again, thinking about Legacy Park, we already have things that are existing there, structures that are existing there that we can utilize that I know have been slowed by this pandemic. And it's really important to now make sure that we're pushing those things forward so that we can make sure that we're having a close eye on including all pieces of our community and all parts of our community and really making sure that things stay affordable. And the way that we can do that, I think, is by looking back at these kind of innovative ideas and thinking outside the box on housing, rather than thinking about fees or thinking about raising taxes, giving ourselves the opportunity to look at what we already have in Decatur.
Thank you. Commissioner Walsh, same question to you. Do you think the city should charge, should implement development impact fees? Three minutes.
Thank you for this question and I'll try and thread the needle here. I'm speaking as a candidate, not as a commissioner. As you probably know, Dan, this has been before us in a couple of different ways. It's actually a policy activity in progress and parts of it are with the state being analyzed to come back to us to meet state requirements for reporting and analysis in in the event that we would pass them. So it's something that could become, could, could come before our body. But I don't have a date on that yet. So impact fees have a long history in our city and they work for some cities. And like I said, we're in the process of taking a look at how they would work for us. So they're not a slam dunk. We have grown twenty-nine percent in the last ten years. We've had a huge wave of growth and development. And that's not inconsistent with what's happened with DeKalb being one of the fastest-growing counties in our state and the Atlanta metro area, which includes our county, being the fourth fastest-growing metro in the country. So did we miss the vote on them? I wouldn't say that per se, but the, the, a big chunk of development has already happened. But let's think about the future. We could be at twenty-eight thousand residents by 2030. And we will have more redevelopment and development. So impact fees could serve us in the sense that they go back into our budget in a targeted way. I don't want them to affect whether and how, if we're in the driver's seat on any development related to workforce housing, which we've been identifying as a goal to supply more of that. So let's just say it's in conversation. What I've seen of impact fees is mixed. I wouldn't use it as a development tool. I would only want to use it as something that we could customize to be Decatur-specific to fill our coffers up in the places where we absolutely where the developments use impact, like stormwater is a key one. You can use impact fees for stormwater to plant trees, to buy green space, for example. So those are the things that appeal to me. But I'm not sure we know enough just yet to say for Decatur that we're going to do that. But I could see them working here if they're very Decatur-specific.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with Commissioner Walsh. A proposal was recently brought to and denied by the City Commission for a new tenant at the former bank at 315 West Ponce de Leon Avenue. What actions, if any, would you like to see the city take regarding the drive-through lanes on the property if they are not going to be used by a potential tenant? Three minutes.
Drive-through lanes have a certain amount of historic charm. And I think in one of the renderings I saw, it looked like the perfect place for a parklet, to be honest. Whether or not the business moved in or not, they were starting to shape up as a, a car-free zone. The drive-through was not going to be used. And that was an application by the owner of the building that went to planning. So it was less, it was not what I'd say denial of the business. It was the owner who makes an application that comes through planning. And we had issues with it not conforming to our special pedestrian overlay zone and meeting a lot of the requirements that we'd like there. We mentioned surface parking lots. We have worked really hard through our downtown, our overall downtown plan even from the eighties, but everything about what we do downtown is about having less surface parking in a reasonable way and making it as pedestrian-friendly as possible. So you know, I, I don't foresee the drive-through being used as a drive-through anytime in the near future. I could see another tenant coming in and again, trying to be very creative in using the eight spaces that are there and, you know, using the shared parking that exists from the Place on Ponce. But I, I live right up the street. We would also get some plantings through the requirements of the special pedestrian zone along that walkway. It definitely needs shade. And I think it'll be a much more, a much more appealing place for downtown residents. So well, I, I would rather see the pedestrian overlay utilized than twenty-five parking spaces in and out moving forward.
Thank you. Same question to Katie Bell. A proposal was recently brought to and denied by the City Commission for a new tenant at the former bank at 315 West Ponce de Leon Avenue. What actions, if any, would you like to see the city take regarding the drive-through lanes on the property if they are not going to be used by a potential tenant? Three minutes.
Yes. So I think it's important that when we think about what already existing spaces will be used for that are already present, I think it kind of is representative of a larger issue, which is that we are experiencing unsustainable growth. And when individual tenants want to come in and things are denied to do certain things with certain spaces, I think that really, there's a an intentional way that we can not only combat our unsustainability and our lack of sustainable growth and using spaces in a more creative way. And I think it also speaks to the larger issue of making sure that we have more bike and pedestrian friendly places and spaces and making sure that things are walkable. So I know that we have seen an incredible amount of growth in the last ten years that has impacted, you know, the amount of students coming into our school system, which means the amount of students that are walking to our schools. And so making sure that we are first and foremost looking not only at how tenants use spaces when they have a proposal, but also looking at how we can make areas more bike and pedestrian friendly. So I think about Commerce Drive and how there is a space where sidewalk and lighting is needed, especially in front of the high school. I think about when I think about how we're going to use this drive-through, I think of the broader issue of making things safer, like intersections at Commerce and West Ponce and Scott, Scott Boulevard and actually Superior, as I was a near miss there as well. So it also, it takes a full, more cohesive collaborative effort to look at things from a more holistic point of view. Our economic, environmental and social sustainability all really hinges on making sure things are affordable. And as well, and this includes using spaces to the benefit as well as making sure that we're sustaining, maybe using something there that might be more green space friendly, making sure that we're improving our canopy. All of these things cannot be looked at individually. They have to be looked at from a more collaborative, overlapping point of view. And so I really think that when we look at how tenants want to use things, when we look at things that are going to spaces that are existing, it's really important to make sure that we have an eye on sustainability and affordability.
Thank you. Katie Bell.
Can I pop in with a quick follow-up?
I'll give you one minute and then I'll give Katie a follow-up for, of one minute.
I heard a phrase there that I'm uncomfortable with, which is unsustainable growth. There's really just growth and then there's growth that we drive and organize and change for ourselves, which is called smart growth. So you know, there's not a way that cities should ever plan to disincent growth. I think what we do is we plan smart, we mask density around transit, but we realize it's coming. And it's coming because we are an attractive place to live embedded in a growing metropolitan area. So I don't know if I'd talk about unsustainable growth, but, because I think that puts us heading down a dead end where we don't know where we end up. So I just wanted to, you know, move that conversation around to us being in the driver's seat, driver's seat, growth is coming. How do we react? And how do we make it meet, you know, Decatur's plans and protect our quality of life?
Thank you. Katie Bell, I'll give you a minute to respond to her response if you like. You're on mute, Katie.
I, when I think about unsustainable growth, I, I really have to push back there as well because we do see a large input into our community when it comes to how many students are coming into our school systems and how many people want to come into our community. And I'm not sure that the growth that we're experiencing right now is sustainable. From an educator's point of view, thinking about the number of students, making sure that their needs are being met appropriately. I'm not sure if I'm seeing that happen. I'm not sure if I'm seeing our ability to make sure that we are looking closely at our environment by this strategic plan. We need to make sure that our canopy is larger, that we're pushing for more green space. And so, and thinking about, yes, ways we can use existing developments for affordable housing. It's important that the reason I use the word unsustainable is I want to make sure that those things that we have in our community are for everyone, meaning we need affordable housing, workforce housing, and also senior and older adult housing, which I'm not really seeing. So I know that we need to make sure that Decatur is a place for everyone to live, work and play. And I'm not sure if I'm seeing that right now.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with Katie Bell. And this comes from a resident, Katie. A resident wants to know, what will you do to ensure the sidewalks get fixed on Church and Claremont? Three minutes. You're, you're on mute.
You'll have to excuse me as I had to move to my phone today because my computer is acting up.
No worries. Three minutes.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. A resident wants to know, what will you do to ensure sidewalks get fixed on Church and Claremont? Three minutes.
Yes. So when listening to Carmen Sultan talk about our budget, which, and also Dan Basterville, thinking about ways to use our budget, I think it's really important. They were both discussing ways to find innovative ways to fix things and make sure that infrastructure is being maintained in creative ways. So I think that the funding is there in our budget. And I think it's really important to find creative ways in order to make sure that we are protecting and also repairing infrastructure. So I think it's important to also look at, you know, when thinking about how we are making spaces more safe for pedestrians and for bikers, it's really important to make sure that what we have there that's already existing is the safest or it can, or if we can do better. So thinking about ways that we can maybe change signaling, maybe ways that we can make robust dividers or protection for those that are walking in those spaces. It's important, one, to look at our budget and figure out ways that we can allocate some of our budget to these things that need to be fixed and need to be maintained. And also think about creative ways that we can make it safer for the future as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Walsh, same question to you. A resident wants to know, what will you do to ensure the sidewalks get fixed on Church and Claremont? Three minutes.
So it's a great day to say that those sidewalks will be renovated and updated along with the project happening on Church Street, the build-out of the cycle track, the completion of the Bank of America building and that whole intersection at Church and Commerce. And then as you go down toward Claremont will be updated, made more pedestrian-friendly, wider sidewalks and all new with that. So that's exciting. That's the good work that gets done because of our smart pedestrian-friendly municipal code, as a matter of fact. But more broadly on side- Um, but more broadly on sidewalks, uh, we invest pretty heavily in sidewalks. I always want to do more. Whenever there's just looks like a spare change under the couch, I want to throw that at sidewalks. That's what I ran on in twenty seventeen was a campaign about walkability. Uh, walkability is one of our greatest assets. Um, there's a great book by Jeff Speck. Um, and he talks about how we are the products of our built environment. So uh, what our sidewalks offer us is both health and community. So sidewalks have always been a big priority of mine and I'm, I'm out on them all the time. I hear from seniors, that was a big revelation a few years ago, and it just continues to ring true to for downtown. Our sidewalks are uh always an issue. The minute you put in a sidewalk, it's like when you buy a car, it starts to depreciate and to degrade. So that is something that cities really have to stay out ahead of. Um, we have a sidewalk prioritization plan. Uh, when I was on Active Living, we got recruited and a lot of the folks on the board went out feet on the street to kind of ground truth what was going on. And that helped set up um a very detailed sidewalk prioritization plan that our Public Works uses. And if you don't think David Younger cannot help with sidewalks, um, you're crazy because if you have a sidewalk problem, please contact me and/or David Younger, and we're going to work on that sidewalk issue. We found a great contractor, and you may have seen this crazy shaving and grading that goes on, but it allows us to repair sidewalks more cost-effectively. We don't always have to replace them, but we can grade down those lips that appear so that we can make them smoother and get more, get more time out of them. But uh, I get pretty excited about sidewalks. I was a big uh champion of, still am of Safe Routes to School, which runs under the auspices of the city, actually. Uh, we fund it, we train for it, we uh recruit for it. And that is one of the, the most important things our kids have, I think, is to be able to walk and bike safely to school. So sidewalks um are really important, and I would say that Church and Claremont, uh, we should see that happening as the, like I said, as that Church Street bicycle uh project gets off the ground.
Thank you. Uh, next question, we're going to start with Commissioner Walsh. Uh, Commissioner Walsh, and I want to point out that this number, I think, is coming from advocates who support strengthening the tree ordinance. So that's where this figure is coming from. But uh, do you support adding a sixty-three percent tree canopy goal to the city's tree ordinance? Three minutes.
Absolutely. We need a couple of things in our tree ordinance. Well, we need a stronger tree ordinance. It is no longer serving us well. We've talked about growth um and how we will uh manage through and do the right things to protect trees while making um, making smart choices to be able to do the other things we want to do around affordable housing, for example. Um, but let's just get started. So within the ordinance, and it's a draft ordinance that is out in the community for feedback, um, there are different numbers. There's a lot of mechanics to it, but I think we need a very aspirational goal up top um when we set the scene for the tree ordinance. Um, within the ordinance, however, is the guts of it or the mechanics and what folks have to comply with. So let's recognize that some seventy percent of our canopy indicator resides in single-family homeowners' yards. So it's what, what you have if you own a, a single-family property. That's where the greatest impact has to come from this ordinance. This is a rewrite of an existing ordinance. It's not starting something ground up. Could we do something like that in future? Absolutely. But I think we'll wait, um, we'll, we'll pass this ordinance, um, we'll give it a, a more aggressive canopy goal, and then we need to work through the community, particularly those who will be the most impacted, on what the guts of it look like and what that compliance number. Um, so in the room, under the bright lights on a Monday night, when the tree ordinance comes before me, uh, we're going to pick the most aggressive number for the aspirational goal. And then we're going to pick the number that's rational and workable and um supports our city the best from a compliance standpoint. And you know, there's still some stuff to work out. This has been a work in progress. I think trees uh prove themselves to be trying and tedious and technical as far as working on the ordinance, but they're such a, are tremendous natural resource. They uh do the yeoman's work of stormwater retention. They mitigate the urban heat island effect. Um, they protect us. My, my family has a history of skin cancer. You better believe we chase shade whenever we can. Um, so we have to protect our trees. And I will tell you, when we come out of passing the updated ordinance, we'll have the most aggressive tree ordinance, obviously that Decatur's ever had, uh, likely the most progressive aggressive ordinance um from this canopy goal and from the compliance goal within it in the state, and I dare say in the country relative to cities of our character, which are compact, dense, and very built out.
Thank you. Uh, Katie, if you could go ahead and unmute your mic, please. Um, do you support adding a sixty-three percent tree canopy goal to the city's tree ordinance? Three minutes.
I do support a sixty-three percent, and I also think that we should shoot higher, our goals should be higher in thinking that we can do a seventy percent canopy. So when I looked closely to the way that we measure tree canopy, there are things that are measured, I think, in our tree canopy that specifically may not be inclusive of what our tree canopy actually reflects. So again, it's important that we protect our older trees. It's important that we are, if we are cutting down trees, I think right now, if we look at single um living units for families on properties, they can cut down, I think it's three trees every sixteen to eighteen months. And for me, that's too many trees already. We need to make sure that we are ma- making very intentional moves to enforce our ordinance for our tree canopy. And when we enforce that, I think that we can shoot higher for a seventy percent tree canopy and also making sure that we're looking at tree canopy in a way where we're looking at our older, more robust trees. And that when we replant trees to replace our canopy, that we're using native plants, that we're making sure that we're planting trees that are not just seedlings, but bigger trees. Thinking about ways that we can sustain our environment now is an important way that we can build up our canopy and protect our canopy. And the reality is, is if we don't protect our canopy, we are going to have problems with storm and water runoff. We're going to have problems with our, you know, having the deserts in our parking lots and things of that nature. So I, again, educating ourselves on what tree canopy looks like and what it needs to look like, as well as how we can plant effective native species and trees and protect what we already have as well.
Thank you. And Katie, we're going to uh start with you. So go ahead and unmute your mic again uh for this next question. Um, one of Decatur's most notorious intersections is North Decatur Road and Superior Avenue. There've been a, quite a few accidents there. Uh, residents have been asking for improvements for years, and there are some proposed changes to make that intersection safer. What is it going to take to finally see some action to improve this intersection? Three minutes.
Well, I think that's a really good question as I think about Superior and Claremont, or Scott, excuse me, and how I've been a near miss there as well. And I do realize that I was out in front of my house the other day because I do live on Scott, and I noticed that they were redirecting traffic because there was a serious accident there. I know that there's memorial to somebody who died there on a cycle. So what I think it's really going to take is for us to really be intentional and how we are allocating our funds in order to make sure that we are protecting our intersections. I think things that we can do or ideas that I have is, is making sure that our signaling is clear, maybe putting something there like a clear flashing light to slow individuals down. And something that I'm a proponent for, and I think that I should encourage, is I really think that we should lower the speed limit indicator. I very much advocate for a twenty-five limit, speed limit and low, and lower, because when you look at the research, the lower the speed is if, if somebody is involved in, in an accident like that, the, the slower vehicles are going, and the more we can get those vehicles to slow down, the more likely of the person it, it to be able to survive. Now, heaven forbid that ever happens, but we know the reality is, is it's happening. So it's important to think of also creative ways. Maybe we can change the way that the lines are painted, we have clear signage. We need to make sure that we're advocating and getting education, educating ourselves on what these intersections, these dangerous intersections are. I kind of think about also other walkways, like there's not sidewalks in front of Tally for our students to safely walk to school. And I think about how we're crossing the street in front of the high school. There are innovative and really creative ways that we can update the signage, we can update uh different kinds of lighting systems in order to make sure that we're being safe and also making sure that we are really advocating for that safety will include being really intentional on how we allocate funds in order to make sure that we're making more robust and maintaining our infrastructures as well.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Walsh, same question to you. Uh, one of Decatur's most notorious intersections is North Decatur Road and Superior Avenue. There've been quite a few crashes there over the years. Uh, residents have been asking for improvements for years as well, and there are some proposed changes to make that intersection safer. But what is it going to take to finally see some action to improve this intersection? Three minutes.
Thank you. That is uh admitted, agreed, I agree that that's a terrible intersection. Um, we have a relationship in place with the county, and we've had great conversations. I would say the pandemic delayed some of the progress there. There's also, um, it's not a funding issue on the side of Decatur and say that the, the comment that it's, that we need to throw more dollars at it. Uh, if we could do that, I think we'd, we have made a lot of headway there. Um, roads controlled by GDOT are also particularly challenging to work on, but we have great relationships. We've shown that we can get a lot of good work done on those roads, like on Candler with the Hawk signal um down further on the south side, um, anywhere like on um Candler or uh even part of Claremont where we can get a Hawk signal. We've usually made great progress and are working that relationship with GDOT. Um, we have to slow people down. I think that's an enforcement issue, and where we have control of lowering speed limits, I'm absolutely in favor of that. Um, that, that uh intersection is not unlike Scott and um Claremont. We see um difficulties in all of our major intersections, and where I've seen the most gains uh for Decatur is when residents, like the person who asked this question, come together in community, and I've seen a lot of great work by Calum Candler. I would love to see a broader uh encompassing group that I would call Calum Decatur to come together to work in um, in concert with our, for example, Active Living Advisory Board that has a pedestrian subcommittee, um, working closely with our Public Works and helping us elaborate what we said we'd do in the twenty-eighteen transportation plan. So it is um sticky, difficult work. I think we could also add some more bandwidth um on working on these issues at City Hall. And we know that through um, through proper staffing and um being able to prioritize that, that we can work even harder on it. But I'm pretty proud of what we've been able to do with GDOT this far, but we can't ever take our foot off the gas. And I think it takes citizen pressure and citizen coordination with us. But coming out of the pandemic, I'm very optimistic that we can have some breakthrough, particularly at North Decatur and Superior.
Believe it or not, that is our last question of the forum. I do want to be respectful of the candidate's time. Uh, we're going to start with our closing statement, and we're going to start with Commissioner Walsh. You have three minutes to make your closing statement.
Thank you. I'm grateful for this conversation. Uh, thank you for this last hour. I'm very thankful and grateful for the opportunity to serve Decatur as well. I'm always going to give my time and talent to serve Decatur and try to make it the best place. It can be to be strong, resilient, and a place where we thrive and are happy and in, in diverse community together. Um, I have a long track record of service that I rely on to um help me make decisions, help me find resources and information for lots of things that I don't know or haven't learned yet. Um, and I want to continue to take advantage and use the trust or relationships that I've built over the, over the last sixteen years here in Decatur. I know that we have a community that, like I said before, wants to do better and be better. Um, let me situate us in a place and time as well, having um said that in two years, we'll be two hundred years old. This is a mature, uh wonderful city. It's the um county seat. And I think in two more years, we're going to also have this reckoning of who are we? Where, where have we been? We have painful history that we're reckoning with now, both from the distant past and the more recent past. Um, but everything I've seen from Decatur is that we work together, we stay comfortably uncomfortable in conversation about things that aren't working well. And I'm really thrilled about the strategic plan that is grounded in issues around equity, diversity. Um, the vision from it, I want to read this, "Decatur will foster an equitable, thriving, and welcoming community for all today and in the future." Um, that's an exciting starting point, jumping off point for the Destination Twenty-Thirty Plan. Um, so I've told you a little bit about me. Um, I'm here for all of you, for my neighbors, my constituents. You can find me um by phone or email. Please go to my website at votekellywalsh.com. Um, take some time to see our first-term accomplishments and my second-term priorities, and I'd happily answer questions. And I'd like to hear um from you about what, what makes you happy, what's worrying you. Um, don't forget, Dan mentioned the dates earlier about October fourth, last date to register to vote. October twelfth begins early voting, and November second is the big voting day. I humbly ask for your vote uh to reelect me to a second term. And thanks again, Dan, for Decaturish. I've completed the lengthy questionnaire, and I look forward to that being published and everything you'll put out, uh, out online about uh, about our campaigns.
Thank you. Uh, Katie Bell, if you could go ahead and unmute your microphone, you have three minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you for the reminders. I always need reminders. Um, so I want to say thank you for allowing us to have this forum. I'm glad that we have Decaturish, which is a local news reporting source, and I do very much um support local business. I want to reinforce that I represent a part of the constituency of our young workforce, of an individual who makes below the average median income, who doesn't have kids yet, who wants the opportunity for everyone's voice to be included, that every, that this is a place, not only that we can hear everyone's voices, because oftentimes I find people who don't have a seat at the table have the answers to our questions. And a lot of the times, that's our marginalized populations, our community of color, those who don't, you know, as, the more diversity we have, the strength is in our diversity. And the more that we can make a diverse representative board on our commission, the more I think that we can address these hard questions that we have in heart and, and come up with creative solutions in our community. Something that I didn't get to talk about is the way that we communicate. I was talking to um an individual who's running for a school board, and we were talking about the importance of communicating between our different commission and our school board. I think it's important that when we think about representing uh our community and being inclusive and being equitable, that we're really including the voices of our workforce, of our teachers, our nurses, our firefighters, and making sure that everyone has a seat at the table, because it's important that our board represents our entire community, that it is a place that we all can live, work, and play, and afford, and be able to live here. So I'm ready to serve our community, and I'm ready to serve and bring this passion to City Hall and making sure that we are all on the same page, because it needs to be under the goal of being inclusive and equitable and having a close eye and making sure that everyone is representative on our commission. So thank you again for this opportunity, and whether you've lived here for three years or for thirty years, I want to let you know that your voice matters, and I want to make sure that we are bringing all of the voices to our commission. I also want to say, if you have any questions, if you want to reach out to me, you can um go to www.votekatiebell.com. I'm happy to meet with you, and I'm really looking forward now that I've recovered from COVID to safely and socially distinctly meeting all of you in the future. So thank you again for also making sure that we could, I could be a part of this forum as well.
Happy to, happy to, Katie. Thank you so much. Thank you, uh, in particular to Commissioner Walsh for your service and Katie Bell for your interest in public service. Uh, I, I like to give this little sermon at the end of every one of these forums, but local government is, is the most important government that we have. I can't say that enough. It is the most important, most impactful government that we have. It's the government that has the most ability to impact our daily lives. And uh, to, to, for it to work, we've got to have candidates that are willing to step up, uh, sacrifice their time and be a part of that process. So I thank you both for being willing to do that. I think all the candidates who have been a part of these fourteen forums, fourteen forums, y'all, we just finished our fourteenth forum. I'm going to go have a nice cold beer at the end of this uh to celebrate. I'm glad that we've successfully completed all of these. If the forum, well, first of all, election day is November second. Uh, early voting starts October twelfth. Decaturishvotes.com is where you're going to find all of our elections coverage. You're going to find coverage of the forums, you're going to find videos of the forums. We're going to upload this to YouTube later. Uh, you're going to find our candidate questionnaire, you're going to find information on how to vote and where, so you can make a plan. Uh, so please look for all of our coverage at Decaturishvotes.com for coverage of Decatur, Atlanta, and Avondale Estates. Um, if our service that we provide matters to you, if you care about local news, if you care about being informed of what's going on in your community, there's a link right there uh over here to supportmylocalnews.com. We have fifteen hundred paying supporters on Decaturish right now. We've kind of held true with that number. We'd like to see more because that base of support, the people who pay to keep our news from going behind a paywall, is what allows us to do things like hold fourteen different candidates forums for all of the candidates running for local office in our city. It allows us to pay for great reporters like Zoe Siler, who goes to all of these meetings, not just the city commission meetings, she goes to the school board meetings, uh, she handles some of the planning stuff, she goes to Legacy Park, she goes to the DDA meetings. Um, that matters and that costs money. So if what we do matters to you, if you appreciate having local news, please visit supportmylocalnews.com and become a paying supporter to Decaturish. It'll cost you as little as three dollars a month. Every little bit helps, and we appreciate you. So that is it. That is the conclusion of all of our forums. I'm going to take a break next week, if it's okay with everybody. next week, if it's okay with everybody. I'm going to, could not do a Twitch show next week, take a little time off. Then we're going to come back. I'd like to plan a show. We have several candidates in Decatur who are running unopposed. I'd like to invite them on to have just sort of a friendly panel discussion about the future of Decatur and where the city's going. So look forward to that. We'll announce details about that soon. Until then, everyone, thank you for watching. Everyone have a wonderful, great, safe weekend. Please, for the love of God, get your vaccine for COVID. If you haven't already gotten it, wear a mask, get your flu shot too while you're at it, and we'll see you next time, everybody. Have a good one. Bye-bye.
Thank you.